Call the meeting order, please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Open the meeting to the public at this time. No one wishes to address us at this time, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting. All have copies, there's any additions or deletions.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Thank you. Motion made by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Hockel. Uh, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. You don't have copies, are sent us any additions? No, there's not. Thank you.
Make a motion to pay the bills?
Second. Motion made by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Hockel, to pay the bills, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents.
Excuse me, we have a letter from Carolyn Bailey, who sent account clerk typist for us. Carol had previously submitted her resignation with an effective date of June 13th, 2003. We received a new letter from Carolyn, addressed to whom it may concern. I, Carolyn Bailey, hereby change my resignation from June 13th, 2003, to May 16th, 2003. Close the business. My position with Village Rouse's Point was an account clerk typist. Sincerely, Carolyn Bailey. Let you folks know of that change, so should be done a week from Friday. The next piece of correspondence we have is from Tri-Deb Insurance Broker. They're the actual company that handles the basic policy that we have with the village through the LeBarre Agency. It was addressed to the mayor. Dear Mr. Rivers, we at Tri-Deb Insurance Services were happy to be of service to you for your insurance programs, et cetera. It is now time to review your coverage that will expire during the month of July. Our review of this account indicates that renewal pricing may be subject to a rate increase and coverage may be reduced. If you have any questions or need assistance with renewal process, please contact your agent. It was signed by Lisa Garcia as the underwriter. I have a question with regard to what they mean by our coverage being reduced, so I have a call into Andrea LeBarre to find out if she can give us a bit more information, and I'll report back to you folks at the next meeting.
Thank you, Phil.
The next piece of correspondence we have is from Montgomery Post, number 912 American Legion, it was addressed to me. Every year, the American Legion Post 912 in Rouse's Point conducts a poppy sale. It is generally held at places of businesses, and sometimes we stand on the sidewalk meeting workers as they report for work in the morning or leaving in the afternoon. We understand permission is now required from the village office, and ask this be brought up at the next meeting and advised. We normally hold our poppy sales in May. Thank you. Signed by Rodney Wright, commander of American Legion Post 912. So it's up to you folks.
Any other motion?
No.
Second. Motion by John Hockel, seconded by trustee Menard. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion. Simply, I asked them to do this because we had a conflict with, a couple of years ago, with VFW. And I don't want them pulling the fighting, right? So if the Legion wants to do it, then I told the VFW that, you know, we support the Legion here. So, all in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Any may oppose? No. Motion carried.
I'll note five of them, that has been approved. This next letter, uh, it was dated May 1st. It's from Sandra Aruda, it was addressed to the village, and its subject is water damage to front lawn. On February 20th of this year, a village water main broke in front of our house due to the back pool of water from the broken main and the use of the back pool on the front lawn, there is damage that needs to be repaired. The horse is the water, left a large little spot that needs to be attended to. She goes on a couple more explaining the damage that was caused. Also, when the village crew put in the underground wiring to the house, they dug up some tarmac and said they could be back to repair the cutout area. To date, this has never been completed. Spring is here, and I've waited patiently long enough for the village to appear and fix the front lawn, our sidewalk and tarmac near the underground entrance next to the house. Could you please advise them the village crew will be here to complete the work, or should I hire someone to complete the work and charge the village for Rouse's Point? Thanks for your attention. It was signed Sandra Aruda. I am asking our, our public works crew to look at that, just so you'll know. And that's all I have for, for correspondence.
Thank you, Phil. Report of mayor's trustees. Have a resolution. Whereas the village of Rouse's Point purchased a property previously assessed to the mobile revenue, mobile home park tax map, such, 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 in Putten County, on July 2nd, 2002, and whereas the property has unpaid water and sewer rents, 14166 and 21925 respectively, and whereas the village code, unpaid water and sewer rents on April 30th of each year are to be retrieved, be relieved, relieved to the property owner, and whereas the village is a tax exempt entity, it does not collect property debt. You mean we can't add that to the village taxes?
Not for ourselves.
Therefore, be it resolved, the unpaid water and sewer rents of said amounts respectively be written off, charged back to the water and sewer fund. And I put that in the form of a motion. It's, uh, roll call vote. Second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Penfield. Roll call vote, trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hockel, trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Okay. I believe this was read, um, at the last meeting when I wasn't here, it's the, uh, the annual meeting of the Conference of Mayors, being held at the Hudson Valley Resort, June 1 through 4, 2003. And I previously said I would like to go, and is there anybody else that would like to go?
When is it, George?
June 1, 2nd, the 4th.
Yeah, I'll be on the count.
I guess I'm going, by myself. Make a motion to another thing, please.
Make a motion that we send the mayor to the Niteon Conference?
I'll second down.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay. Sixth Annual Niteon Meeting. We have not attended this in the past for obvious reasons, it's a one-day meeting, and it's, this is on the, the people that we get our incremental power from. Uh, I don't think it's that important at this time, there's nothing special coming up in it, so. If anybody wants to go, they're more than welcome to go. Okay, uh, the next item on the business is authorized travel for Paul, our administrator, to Saratoga, uh, to stay overnight, one night. Call forms are all in. We had a phone conversation with Peter Waltz from the Department of State, and he highly recommended that Paul go to this, he's gonna set a meeting up for Paul and Thousand Island Parks at the same time. Uh, that's the headquarters, or not Thousand Island Parks, but, uh...
Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation, that's the headquarters, right there. Got it. So I put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
And the next item on the agenda is contract for 2003, 2004 with our village engineer. You all have copies. I presume that everybody has had a chance to look at them. It says here actually that Earth Science Engineering is gonna pay us this year to work for us.
Hmm. The past time, but...
No discussion.
No discussion. Is any, uh...
Is that the same, was that the same one we had, what, a couple months ago? Is that it, or what is the date on that?
Uh, this is February 5th.
Yeah.
We have that one at our budget workshops.
Right.
Need a motion?
Make a motion, new. Re-sign the contract with the village engineer?
Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
I just wanna say that I think Doug does a good job to the village, and he's very professional.
Please don't pat him on that.
Thank you for the good work that you do in the village.
There being no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
We have a roll call vote.
Certainly you may. Roll call vote, okay. You got who made the motion, seconded it? Okay. Roll call vote, trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hockel. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee, uh, Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And, I haven't done something else. Oh, good. That's it for me. Uh, trustee Menard.
Um, first item on the agenda tonight is to, uh, make a motion for an executive session to discuss electric personnel.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by trustee Penfield. Uh, roll call vote, trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hockel. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Uh, my second item is, uh, the annual refuse quotes. Um, we got two quotes this year, same as last year, from northern, one from Northern Sanation, for 392.50 per monthly fee, and their July 4th pickups were $49 a pickup from the civic center and $46 per pickup from the fire station. Cooper's Trucking came in at $409.16 monthly fee, but their, uh, July 4th pickups were much cheaper, at $20 per pickup from the civic center and $30 per pickup from the fire station. Uh, the monthly difference is $199, and last year, we had additional pickups for 4th of July was $277. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept, uh, Cooper's Trucking as our annual refuse.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And my last item is...
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
All vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hockel. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And my last item, uh, we received, uh, on April 30th from, uh, New York Municipal Power Authority, an environmental disclosure label that will be, that has to be handed out to all the village residents. Basically just tells what, what our fuel sources are for the power sources, and these labels will be mailed to each and every village customer, uh, within the next week or so from...
Within a couple weeks, yes.
Within a couple weeks. So I have, something we have to do for...
Just like the water plant and things.
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Menard. And trustee Hockel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item, I'd like to address an executive session to discuss public office...
Second.
Motion made and seconded by trustee Penfield. Uh, roll call vote, trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hockel. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice to all four bids on that, and I'd like to make sure...
I'll second down.
Motion made and seconded, uh, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Usually they're a breath, but that will be... Those opposed. Doug, do you have anything on the water?
Yes, we have, uh, three things. One is that today Landmark, the tank contractor, was supposed to be on site, we didn't see them there today. We called Landmark and found out that, according to Eugene Chastain, one of their lead managers, uh, the crew is in transit. They'll either be here today or tomorrow. And it looks like we're gonna have rain Tuesday and Wednesday. Thursday, we're starting to come out of it, so we'll probably see work on the tank later this week. Also regarding contracts 2 through 5, uh, this Thursday at 11 o'clock, we have a pre-bid conference for that contract, and the bids are due on May 28th from that contract. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. It's always good. Thank you, trustee Hockel. Trustee Penfield.
Um, first item that I have tonight is an update on the ladder truck, which has now been repaired back in the village, back in service, back in excellent shape, and, um, the cost will be approximately $2,500. Are, are we sending it to Bill Bryan, do you know?
No, we received...
We already have it, okay, so we're all set. So, um, it looks like things, as far as the ladder truck though, are just fine. So that's a good thing. Good news. Uh, the second item I have is a resolution of appreciation, which was read at the Fireman's Banquet on Saturday honoring George Cookman for his years of service, and I'd like to read it into the record. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rouse's Point, New York, wishes to express their congratulations and appreciation to George Cookman for 25 years of volunteer service to the Rouse's Point Fire Department and EMS Squad, and whereas George is recognized by the department and the community for his leadership, kindness, compassion, and ability to wear many hats as rescue captain, assistant chaplain, EMT, advanced EMT, and Santa Claus, and whereas his dedication and service as an American Red Cross CPR instructor at northern-tier schools and businesses will have a lasting and invaluable impact on the community, and whereas George's familiar presence has been a source of comfort and security to North Country residents during countless ambulance calls and in times of need. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rouse's Point does hereby congratulate and publicly thank George Cookman for his years of tireless dedication to the Rouse's Point Fire Department and the residents of the village. Our appreciation and gratitude go out to him for offering so generously of his time and kindness in so many of our lives, and this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Roll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hockel. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Uh, two seconds, you have a second.
Okay, the third item that I have this evening is a discussion regarding renovations to the library. Um, we currently have for this year's budget $8,500 earmarked for exterior repairs. We also have included the same amount in next year's budget, so we have about $17,000. And the reason I asked Phil to put this on the agenda is that we should really be thinking about getting started on that now that, that May has arrived. I know last year, we ended up with some quotes and a couple of people weren't available to do the work. Um, and in speaking with Phil, we, we were talking briefly about what we should have done, and I, I don't know whether maybe, um, the roof repairs would be the first thing that, that we might wanna take care of.
I think that would be appropriate, 'cause it is leaking. I have some...
Well, it is.
Let's fix that. Slate, do it, George.
Yeah, that's the slate roof. Now, I'm not sure on that spot though, that square spot on, on the, you know, the square thing on the top, 'cause that's where it's leaking. I don't think it's a slate, but, but I don't know, I have to get up and look at it.
Right, right. So...
What do we need to do, file quotes, or hear quotes, or do we have quotes from last year?
We don't have quotes for, for the roof repairs, as far as I can remember from last year. It was mostly the painting and the trim and cleaning of the bricks. I don't think that we ever got any quotes for, for roof repair, to the best of my knowledge. So maybe that would be a good place for us to start, if everyone's agreeable.
Yeah. If we don't fix it, we'll do more damage.
Mm-hmm. Well, actually, I think, uh, probably should advertise for bids to repair the roof, and then, what's, what's the next item on that, Amy?
Yeah, the same thing, cleaning and painting of the trim, um, painting, or cleaning the bricks, rather, um, just in the columns, so some general upkeep on the outside of the building. I don't think anything is really structural, I think it's more just, you know, cosmetic, making it look a little better.
Needs a good go in the bill to get that done before the vote's drawn.
Oh, yes. Probably should put some specs together for about the bid now.
Are you talking about the roof, or the, the cleaning and painting?
All of it.
All of it, okay.
All the exterior work. Can we do it all, though, you think?
Well, that, that's gonna be a question.
We don't know, let's go on the bid, find out.
Yeah. Eighty-five hundred, won't take very long to go through that.
You got 16 pounds.
No, but I thought we were gonna do the inside, though. Eighty-five hundred for the outside, eighty-five hundred for the in, didn't we say that we're gonna have to eventually paint the inside?
We left it in the, in the budget under the same line item, so I think we could really do anything we wanted to with it. Um, I think, there was some talk last year that when we repaired the inside, that we would try to do it in-house during the cold weather months. So I don't know whether that's something that could be possibly added to our schedule. But I think we need to take advantage of the summer while it's here for the outs, outside.
I totally agree.
Now, do we have to, do we have to actually advertise for bids on that, Phil?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And you have to decide, I mean, I'm assuming you're gonna go with a regular asphalt roof, and you're not going with slate for a slate roof.
I don't think the, the main roof has to be touched, Phil, that's the thing. I think the slate roof itself is intact. I think, the way you look at it, roof comes up four sides, and then there's a square thing in the center, and there used to be a, I believe, a cublo on top. They removed the cublo and sealed that, and that's where it's leaking, right around that edge.
So if someone's going to bid on it, do they need to come up here and inspect it first?
They have to look at it, see what...
So you want, rather than replace, or if you want repairs to the roof, is that how you're gonna do it?
That's what I would say, repairs. 'Cause if that's a slate roof and it's not leaking, that they don't, you know, there's no, they could probably repair any missing slates. If it's in good shape, I mean, I got a slate roof from my 100, 150 years ago.
Can I, can I request that, whatever, you know, if you're gonna have repairs to roof, and depending what you want down outside, if you want the brick cleaning and you want painting and, and stuff, that somebody gets together and we sit down and formulate what exactly how we want the bid to, to read?
Sure.
And then, you know, but are you giving, once we do that, are, we have authority to let her bid in to publish that?
Yep.
I'll make a motion on that.
May wanna make that, there's two separate bids also.
There probably will be. Yeah, you'll win that roof repairs.
No, you have two separate.
Be two different.
So I'll make a motion that we go ahead and authorize Phil to publish for the roof repairs and also the exterior sprucing up.
Second. Okay. Motion seconded by trustee Jefferson. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay. The next item I have is a copy that I gave to you for the proposed changes and additions to building permit fees and zoning fees for the village. I had a meeting with Mike Tatro, our co enforcement officer, um, to make some improvements on what our current schedule is. The second page in the packet is what we currently are working under. And the top page is the draft of, of some proposed changes. And actually, I have a couple of corrections that Mike, when he read this over, gave to And that is basically that the $25 is a minimum fee, and the minimum fee for all of the use would be for $25. So I, I need to reword, I guess, in that middle section, is that correct, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, I'll work with Mike to come up with a better wording for that, so that the minimum permit is $25. Other than that, it would be 10 cents per square foot if it exceeded to $25. Is that correct? Okay. Um, and the other major change would be under the commercial and industrial new constructions, renovations, and alterations. It should read up to 20,000 square feet, it would be 10 cents per square foot, and then 3 cents for every additional square foot. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So those would be a couple of changes on the front page. So I'll work with Mike again to go through this, and, um, my understanding is in order to reset these fees, we only need to do it in the form of a resolution, so if we can have it ready for next time. Do you have any other comments, though, or, or questions? I know Mike is here to answer them as well.
I believe this has been a long time coming, it's over a year. It was, uh, I think our attorney recommended that we do this about a year ago.
Yeah. Well, Mike did a really good job. Mike put all of this together, the only thing I did was work with Carol to get it typed up, so I can't take any credit for it. Give it all to Mr. Tatro. Um, and then the last page that you have is a schedule of some zoning fees. Currently, we're really lacking in that particular area, and this is a sample that he uses of the town. And he recommends that we, we obviously will redo this so that it's applicable strictly to the village, but that the dollar amounts that appear there are approximately what we would be, um, working toward.
And that's way behind the times still.
Yes, it is. It's really gonna be important to get this passed.
So, this will be ready for next meeting for a vote, or do you need...
I think so. Is, I mean, unless someone looks this over and has any objections, or I'm gonna sit with Mike and get him to reword this, so, well, if we're okay, we'll put, get the resolution together and try to get it out to the next meeting. Any other comments, Mike?
No, most of these fees are an average of, of what other towns in the area charge. Some are a little more, some are a little less, but they're basically an average, you know? Somebody could argue they're too much, they're not enough, but it costs money to run this building zoning department, you have to pay me, so... Uh, this reflects it. Well, I expect a big raise next year, so we gotta get the money now, you know?
I almost didn't recognize you with your glasses on.
He's doing a very good job for it, gentlemen, let me just say, it's been, been a pleasure. Okay, um, is that it, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a couple of other things, um, going along with that. There was a, uh, meeting on the zoning board this afternoon, and, um, we need to authorize the zoning clerk to publish a legal notice for a public hearing, um, for the purpose of interpretation of our Section 120 in our zoning code for, um, basically a definition of mobile versus modular homes. And then, also at the same time, um, the public hearing for a use variance for, um, I guess the placement of a double-wide mobile home at 87 Montgomery Street in the Village of Rouse's Point. So I'd like to put that in the form of a motion, so that Carol can go ahead and publish that.
Second. Motion made and seconded, uh, you get the second, Phil, trustee Menard. Um, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And the last item that I have is a travel authorization for Michael Fay and Ben Arno to travel to the New York State Association of Fire Chiefs 97th Annual Conference, June 12 through 14, in Syracuse, New York. And, um, it will be, I guess they'll be leaving on the 11th and returning on the 14th of June, so I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the two of them to travel to that conference.
Second. Motion made and seconded by trustee Hockel, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
I just remember I have one other thing, sorry, Brian.
Right.
I've had a couple of residents speak to me about the ongoing cat problems in the village again this year, and apparently it is getting to be as bad as it was in the past. And I know that in, um, next year's budget, we did put some money in for cat control. So, our spend, anything left this year for that? Cat control? our spend, anything left this year for that? Cat control? Remember the gentleman who came up? We have funds remaining that we could use?
I don't know.
Okay.
Ten dollars a cat.
I can look.
We could check on that. Okay.
Where we got the problem, Phil?
The residents that spoke to me are at the back of, between State and Pratt. So about halfway up the block.
Yeah. Okay. I know.
Backy spoke to me, Perro spoke to me.
Yeah.
And I talked to Mr. and Mrs. Frignay.
Yes.
And there's about twelve cats on the running loose. And they just had another litter, and they look really sickly. I don't know, is it that feline thing, or just that they're in their bread and they're not eating?
Yeah. It seems to be getting bad again.
Just get a hold of Bob Craig. He'll get a hold of the guy and get him up here. Whether we got the money or not, we should be taking care of it.
But I know we will have, again, in the... So if it's an ongoing problem during the summer, we're all set. You guys laughed at me when I put that thousand dollars in the budget. There you go. And that's it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Pendel.
Okay.
Trustee Jefferson. Doug, would you like to speak on the sewer?
Sure. I've got several things in that department. The contractor's completed the water connections along Maple Street through State Street. And now the contractor is working with the electric department, doing the electrical crosses across Maple Street. And they completed the boring underneath Pratt Street Friday. They did punch through on the other side. And right now, the boring subcontractor is still here, and Champlain Telephone Company is trying to work something out with them. Last I knew.
Change.
Okay, there's been a change there. Anyways, the subcontractor's all set up. I guess he'll be leaving tomorrow, though. And on Pine Street, Pine Street is getting ready for paving. They're working on curbs right now. And so that'll be paved perhaps next week. And that's it. Any questions?
Just to finish in on that, so you're up to date.
Okay.
He needs, the phone company's gonna work with our electric department when we have the boring for our electric on that street. Because he wants to go straight across, and then he'll worry about it on the other side.
Okay.
They're working together, so that was all done this morning.
Non-issue.
Non-issue.
Okay. Nothing else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Just have a couple of things tonight. First of all, I want to welcome the new fire chief, Brian Pelkey. On Saturday night, we went to the fireman's dinner at the pavilion. It was a real nice dinner, good food. Thank you for the invitation. Thanks again to the fire department for all they do in the village. I was gonna speak on the cat problem, but Kelly beat me to the punch. A number of people have come to me, and so we spoke with Chief Craig, and he couldn't get a hold of the cat unit. And I've been as nervous as a cat on the parade route, so we're gonna talk about that. We made a decision tonight that we've decided that we've been walking around the village, and like John Carr said, if it's not right, we won't be able to pave it. So we've decided that we're gonna change the parade route to shore. So we'd like to let everybody know that the parade will start at the Rouse's Point Elementary School. It will proceed up Academy, come south, and over by Mountain Mark, it will turn and go east, come all the way to Racine's Garage, go north on Lake Street, and the parade will end here in front of the Civic Center. And the parade will be at July sixth at seven o'clock. We haven't sent the flyers out. We've got our bands. We've got six bands coming for the parade. We haven't sent the invitations out for the parade yet, because we were hesitating as far as the parade route. But we had a meeting tonight. We've got a very good crew on the Fourth of July Committee. And we've come to the understanding that we just don't want to change horses in the middle of the stream in case it's not ready, and then try to get a hold of everybody. So we're gonna go ahead with the plan and change the parade route. That's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Jefferson.
No, none tonight. I'll need it tomorrow.
Just to kind of follow up what Doug had reported on contracts two, three, four, and five. We did go out to bid for those, and it was published in the newspaper. The other thing I just wanted to report is that our annual drinking water report was already completed and submitted. It had a due date of May thirty-first, but that's already been submitted to the appropriate votes. And that's it.
Thank you, Carol. Harrison?
I want to report that twelve thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-three cents in unpaid water rents are levied to the tax roll, and nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and eight cents of unpaid sewer rents are levied to the tax roll. We collected what we do for taxes.
What was the second figure, Harrison?
Nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and eight cents. Going back to your question about money for cats, there was actually some money budgeted this year for any kind of animal control. We took that from somewhere else, so...
Oh, this current here?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we need money, we'll have to find somewhere else. Yeah.
Okay.
And there was a budget resolution with the mayor that we didn't pick up, so...
I'm sorry. Maybe I missed it?
If you want me to, I can read it.
Yes, please, because then...
This is a, whereas board trustee thinks it advisable to make certain modifications to the two thousand two, two thousand three village budget, it therefore resolved that the treasurer is authorized and directed to make the following modifications to the village's budget for fiscal year two thousand two, two thousand three. We're gonna decrease the appropriations under the general fund at a hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred ninety dollars. We're gonna decrease account five ninety-nine appropriated fund balance a hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred ninety dollars. Under the water fund, we're gonna decrease account nine sixty appropriations forty-seven thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. Decrease account five ninety-nine appropriated fund balance forty-seven thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. Under the sewer fund, we're gonna decrease account nine sixty appropriated fund balance. That's supposed to be appropriations thirteen thousand three hundred, and increase account five ninety-nine appropriated fund balance thirteen thousand three hundred. All we're doing on this resolution is giving money from this year's budget to the next year's budget. These are all the rolling numbers.
Thank you, Harrison. Roll call, vote. Trustee, I need a motion.
You got it.
Motion made by Trustee Huckroyd, seconded by Trustee Menard. Roll call, vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Huckroyd, Trustee Pendel.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And sorry, that stuck to another page. Didn't see it. I know. That is... Thank you, Harrison. Doug, all set? Ryan? Okay. Paul, you got the floor.
Can I have the ceiling cooked?
And the lights.
And the lights. Okay. If this thing is on, fine. If it isn't, you can't hear me anyway, so...
It's on.
I would like to update you on one reason, or give you more details on the reason for the trip I've requested, as well as update you on the proposed contract that we discussed maybe a month or so ago with the AEDA engineering, at which time I suggested that you hold fire. I am now recommending that you no longer hold fire and authorize the mayor to sign said contract. The developments to date are as follows. We have had, I've had multiple meetings, telephonic meetings, conference calls with Peter Welch and different heads of different departments at the state. Apparently, the report that I wrote went to the right parties for a change. Really woke a few people up at the state level. E S D C is, I want to authorize the twenty thousand dollars holdback, which we can use. You spend it now, they'll reimburse it, as has been done in the past, because of that aspect of the contract. It has been decided, only for logical reasons, that the project will now be phased. Rather than try to do the whole thing in one big whack, which is multi-dollars, pending this meeting Wednesday, Thursday, actually, we should be straightening out the contract deficiencies with Parks and Recreation. To formalize that, on May twenty-second, the new administrator for Parks and Recreation out of Thousand Islands will be here in the village at ten a.m. He wants to see the site, May twenty-second. He wants to see the site, familiarize himself with what had been previously agreed to. I don't foresee any major problems. His support is verbal already. It's just he wants to, he doesn't want to write a contract without looking at the lake. It's as simple as that, and looking at what we'll plan to do. The state is extremely enthusiastic about the pending rendering, which comes from the AEDA contract. That's very important, because it will be used for the following things. It will become part of New York State's, take a look at our waterfront deal, in other words, a tourist attraction or a tourist looksee type thing. It is also going to be used in, and the other reason I'm going to, Saratoga is, we have been advised by the Department of State that there is another grant cycle starting up, has to be done before the end of June. And they want us to apply for bucks for Phase Two and Three. If we even get to Three, we might be able to incorporate it all in Two. But Phase One would be the completion of the boat ramp area, paving or whatever. We have agreed, more or less, that rather than put sheet piling over there, it would be less expensive to go with shot rock on the waterfront aspect of it, and will save us approximately fifty thousand dollars in sheet piling. That fifty thousand dollars would lend itself nicely, or less, to paving of the parking lot there. Also putting in the, lining it and putting in the appropriate ingress and egress signs and a planter or whatever. So that part of the project could be completed with the existing non-contracted-to-date grant that we received last year, and with the remaining monies that we have due was from E S D C's first grant. So that part of it can be taken care of. The next two grant applications would be for the big part of it, which would be the sheet piling and the reconstruction, or I shouldn't call it reconstruction, the building of the new dock facility and all its aspects. That part, we were very smart, believe it or not, not me, but you guys. I'm glad you didn't put the underground in yet, underground wiring in on Montgomery Street, because your commitment to what the village is planning to do on Montgomery Street, just as part of its annual, whatever we're gonna do, turns out to be worth about six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, which we can match if we get double that from the state. We're in easy street. The project will go forward nice and rapidly from there. We are in the phase of permitting. We are applying with the co-engineers and with the D E C. I'm getting good cooperation with the D E C, but it appears as though they have another different person now handling the waterfront issues. I just hope it isn't as bad as the last time. Also, the state, I had a conference call with a gentleman by the name of Tom Hall, who was postal environmental issues guy, that he runs money on that end for the State Department. He saw the report. He looked at all the stuff, all the documents we've got to date. He's very enthusiastic. And this is a rather interesting twist on it. He seems to feel, let's see, that the Department of Governmental Services, OGS, was trying to tag you for the sewer line. It would be appropriate, since we had to pay five hundred dollars to get the dock, if they donated about fifty thousand dollars to us as cost. And he's giving us the paperwork, sending me the paperwork to do that. So unless you have objections, my plan is to write two additional, two new grant applications. I will obviously give you copies prior to submission. It's a short-term thing. It's not gonna be a long month, month, month project. I can use a lot of previous data and just adjust numbers. And we just keep marching forward with it. Actual building this year is non, we just can't build, because we don't have the appropriate permits. And you can't work in the water without the permits, and you can't build without the rest of it. So until the contract, the last year's grant is signed, everything's moving, but, and it should happen very soon, shortly, probably after May twenty-second. Because the gentleman's coming here to take a look, and he is the guy that's authorized to put the contract together and send it to us, the signs, so that we can get the next two hundred thousand. Things are proceeding. I'm enthusiastic about this. And the only reason I'm asking you to stay over for a short trip to Saratoga Springs is I can't drive more than two hours. If I don't, I would be fast asleep at that meeting the rest of the day.
Any questions, Paul?
I do. How do you pull up a six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, Paul?
Well, if you look at the report that I gave on board, you will find it is listed item by item what the donation is from the village.
I'm just curious of the how. You know, you're talking about the underground electric in the end. How, how do we itemize the work that's not yet been done?
You itemize the work by not, the six hundred thousand dollars, okay, was brought together, put together by the village myself, and I think they'll have a little bit of input. And I know Bobby Clark did. That was the estimate, about three hundred or four hundred thousand, almost four hundred thousand dollars to put the underground electric there. That's what we're basing our backs on.
Okay.
And we're basing our backs on this, the previous board and this board has voted to put in one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in cash when the time comes.
Now, I guess I'm...
And we're basing also the donation of your downtown lights that used to be downtown. We've estimated the value of those, and we've also estimated the work to put in. And that's all, that's all credit for us.
But when you say it's all credit, it's not that I'm not, I'm not disputing that. But has that been signed off yet by the powers that be in the state?
Yeah, they love it.
No, but I mean, have we sent them the itemization of all that?
Absolutely. What you got, the report that you got, everybody and his brother-in-law at the state at every level, from Department of State to the Parks and Recreation, to environmental, to the Secretary of State, you name them, they've all got that report, and they are all aware of what we're claiming, and they agree with it.
Okay. So they've already signed off on that?
Well, I can't say they physically have signed something, but I can say they are all aware of it, and they say the plan is good, doable, and they support it one hundred percent.
Okay.
And you don't get fifteen, twenty people at the state that will sign off on anything. I think they'll cut the budget.
I guess my question is, when crunch time arrives, I want to be sure that the figure that we're working with is the actual figure that the state is actually going to accept. For example, let's suppose...
I, I can, I don't want to cut you short, but frankly, I wouldn't make a claim that wasn't already pre-planned and already approved.
I believe that. But you just said, to get fifteen people at the state to sign off on anything is almost, you know, so I'm just kind of reiterating what you just said.
You can't get three to agree on a budget. Do you think I could get fifteen people to literally put their signature on a piece of paper?
But that's not my point, Paul. I just want to make sure that whatever we at the village are working under as an assumption is also going to be accepted by the state. If you tell me it is, then that's fine.
It is?
Okay. Okay.
That's why we have broken it into phases. The total project cost is one point six million dollars, not counting the village's portion. The village's portion is six hundred and I think thirteen thousand dollars. Okay?
So we're looking at two point two million total?
Yeah, somewhat, yes.
Okay. But can I ask you then about the phases? Because I'm just a little curious about this.
About what?
The different phases, Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three. When you talked about the bulk of the work, is that Phase Two and Three, or is that...
We have not come to a conclusion as to the total amount of dollars that will be available in this grant cycle.
Okay.
And it will be proposed to be a Phase Two project.
Okay.
The completion would be a Phase Two. If they come back to us and say, well, we would like to give you amended, but we can only give you seven hundred and fifty thousand, and you'll have to wait another year, yeah, I will add on the third phase.
Okay.
But the next step after this, after the signing of this contract, will allow us to complete a portion of this.
Right.
The dollars will be available. The village's commitment has already been published. And the fact is that the next step, if they, it depends on them. I mean, they make an awful lot of promises of how much is available. The two point three billion dollars right now is supposed to be available for this grant cycle. But then again, the whole state is feeding off of that. However, we do have, we're one of the thirteen chosen few. And that one of the thirteen really means something this time.
Good. That's great.
I mean, you see the bucks flowing into Plattsburgh like dropping eggs out of the basket. I mean, they're dumping the money now. And we have also continued to document and talk with Senator Little. Who knows? After this budget issue is resolved, hopefully this week at the state level, we may have a member item that may resolve an awful lot of this stuff. But I can't count on that until they literally call you up and say you got it. But the bottom line is, yes, six hundred and thirteen dollars has been planned, six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars has been planned. The total project cost has been published to the parties that be. The state is in total agreement with what we're doing, and they still think we're doing a good job to get it this far. And they said we are one of the top two or three in the state right now that's gonna be looked upon very favorably, because we have been patient, and we have been very precise in the presentation of our facts.
Great.
And they are not going to require an audit on the second grant, which is great. Not that it's a crisis, but it saves you thirty thousand bucks. Any other questions?
We need a motion, we need a motion to sign that.
Yes.
Motion by John Huckroyd, seconded by Trustee Menard. Any discussion? There being no discussion. You want a roll call? No?
No.
See a roll call. All those in favor, vote by you to sign a bye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Open a meeting to the public at this time? Anybody wishing to address? Nobody wishing to address us, then I'll take a motion for recess.
Don't move.
Second.
Move by Trustee Menard, seconded by Trustee Pendel, recess at seven.